All right, very good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeal. For tonight's meeting, for the record, we are on Zoom meeting. I want to call the meeting, and it's November 18, 2020. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to make a roll call. We have Mr. Jim Akbachi, our clerk. We have Veronica Devenez, our regular member Jake Morrison, regular member. We have Mr. Conti, associate member, and Mr. Sample. Samples also associate member, also present, our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland.
Yeah, minutes October 14.
Who reviewed the minutes? Jimmy, you don't need mask. What's the matter with you?
Okay.
Are you gonna smirk? Now, that's a good, that's a good tool to smirk to people.
Okay, no more mask. Back in, back in heaven.
All right. Who had the chance to look at the minutes?
Not me.
Never, man. So I guess we're gonna table until next hearing, which is December.
Yeah.
All right.
Number nine.
December 9th, Sonia, December 9th, the minutes, next time. Okay, we're gonna move forward. I want to pass, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Is there any continued public hearing, Ken?
No, there isn't. Just the new public hearing on number 2620, Kevin Nickerson, a variance at 3 Oak Hill Road, map 39 lot T5.
All right, before you read this, but didn't we continue Assistant Living, didn't we continue the 18, and we said if you're not ready, you could continue or no?
It's continued to the December meeting.
Okay, okay, very well. Can you read that note for that new public hearing? Because I don't have it.
We're just down at the multi-service center, and I didn't know that it was here. And there was a gentleman who was a neighbor of 4 Oak Hill. It's a cottage. He has no internet, and there's no way for him to get in to see this meeting or to talk at this meeting. Do I, do I give you the message that he wanted to relay to everybody?
Yeah, Mr. Sample, we have to read the meeting into public first. We have to read them, and then you can, of course. All right, Kenny, want to read it for the record?
I don't have the public notice here.
Counselor, do you have it?
For the assisted living?
No, no. You, you, you're presenting the Oaks, the Oak Hill, right? Right, you have the notice?
I don't.
All right. Okay, hold on one minute. We saw it, everyone, because not all of us could do this. Let me jump to my other computer. Bring it, one second. Actually, I don't have it. No, that's right. It's just I have an agenda. We need that notice, a public hearing notice on the paper.
Let's ask if we can waive the reading of the notice for tonight's public hearing to be able to start it. Julian, what does that say?
No, no, no.
Is it online?
Yes.
Yeah, look. No, it's a variance. You have to read it on record. We just gotta be.
I'll try to look and see if I can find it. But we can't, did it come as part of the email?
No, look online, Jimmy, on ZVA, like on town, town meetings, like town schedule.
Yeah, I couldn't find anything. She said she posted everything to the town website, but.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know where.
Having serious problems with my computer. I went on the Wareham View Cloud to do a permit application, and ever since I went on that, my computer is so jammed up, it doesn't work. I can't pick up anything. I can't do anything. So I don't know what's going on with that town website. But it's absolutely horrible what it has done. This is a brand-new computer, and I have had no problems.
I've been having problems with mine all day, too, and that was.
Whatever's coming through the Wareham thing is screwing everything up, and I didn't get any of that.
I'm glad you said that, because I thought I did something.
Would you download your documents?
What's that?
Did you download documents? Is that what happened?
Oh, all I did was go on and apply like I was supposed to for a building permit. And ever since then, this whole, my computer is pretty much useless. It, it was quick. It's only a month old, and all I know is that I can't do anything. My, we just, I just sat here for 20 minutes waiting for that thing to turn on, and it finally turned on. And it's ever since I've been on that, that whatever, anything that's come through Wareham and that. So I don't know what's going on, but it's ruined my computer. I gotta take it to Staples tomorrow and see if they can flush this thing out, because I don't know what's going on with it. But it's ruined my computer.
All right, one second, please. One minute. Bear, everyone bear with us, please. Let me print this one first.
Rick, you don't bring it to Staples. Bring it to PC Network, guys in Wareham, local business. Great people. Good information, but they were the only people that, I just bought it from them, so I'm hoping maybe so it'll be warranted.
No advertising in public, guys, on town meeting. No saying names, please.
I don't see the notice online, Commissioner.
I see, I see, I see your application.
Yeah, I don't see the notice. I think that's something that just stapled at Town Hall or Sonia would have, right, Ken?
It's posted on the board outside the town clerk's office. When you go to Town of Wareham, you go to departments? Or what do you go to next when you get there to try to find this stuff?
See, I went, I found 13th Street, the newest one. You go to zoning board projects and you drop them down.
Zoning board projects.
What's the name of the applicant? Mr. Nickerson?
Yes. Yeah.
All right, here you go. One second. Roadside plan document, combined file, a battle's letter, attorney opinion, combined file PDF. Let me see the combined file. One second. To know, we have the, we have the plans, which is good. All right, and let me see the first one site. Okay, I found the site plan. Well, I'm learning things. There you go. Let's see what this is. All right, Oak Hill. Well, we have, and you, Counselor, you have Mr. Morris, you have the Mr. Morris letter, right, from Mr. Morris?
I do, and I found the hearing.
All right.
It's not those documents, so it's, I went on Wareham Week, because it gets published in the newspaper. So if you want me to read it, or you want me to?
Yes, why don't, why don't we let Attorney Julian, what's your last name, Morgan?
Morton.
Morton. Attorney Martin lead the hearing for the record.
Sure. So notice the public hearing, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November 18th at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center for 48 Marin Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, to consider the petition number 26-20 for a variance from the requirements of Article 628 under the Wareham zoning bylaws for Kevin Nickerson of 3 Oak Hill Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, proposing demolition and reconstruction of a new, a two-story dwelling at 3 Oak Hill Road, assessors map 39 lot T5 in the R30 zoning district.
All right, very well. We need the applicant name or the attorney's name who's representing the case.
I am attorney Julian Morton. Believe the applicant is here as well, Mr. Kevin Nickerson of 3 Oak Hill Road.
Okay, and you may, you may start, Counselor.
Sure. So hopefully you were able to get into those documents. I know the Commissioner did. And look at the proposed builds that the applicant has. He's obviously over on Oak Hill Road, which has the Wareham River right next to it, and obviously the road behind it. So he's waterfront. Right now, he has a one-story that has one bathroom, a small kitchen, a living room, and two bedrooms. So he's looking to do two levels. And the Commissioner did deny him, because this is a small lot. So you can look on this 628 table. In the letters, a letter, the variance that we're seeking is for the FAR. So on these small lots, as you know, if you look at the table, it's 1,500 square feet for FAR. We're proposing to do a second level that raises FAR up to 2,300, a little over 2,300 square feet. So this area has a history of, it's a valuable piece of property here in Wareham, right on the water. A lot of builds have happened. Actually, I was doing some research, and I found in 2017 property, 9 Oak Hill, very similar situation, and it looks like the zoning board granted that variance as well. If, if you want to pull up, yep, so there's a site plan there. And we did some revisions to the plan. The applicant didn't dig, because initially, when you look at the Commissioner's letter, there were some other variances, such special permits that he had to seek. But he changed the plan, so he's really just taking the property up. He's not trying to make the setbacks smaller. And so we're looking for this variance on the FAR. If you want to look at my attorney opinion letter, I attached some pictures of a property, that 9 Oak Hill, that was approved by variance. And it's very similar, like kind of starkly similar to what the project, if you pull up the plans, Ken, that he's doing, putting the two floors in. I don't know if you can pull those up. And then on the, on the letter that I have, you can see the pictures of that property. We have support. Both of the butters are in support of the project. I did get, I sent it to Sonia. It is uploaded as well. The direct butter to, if you're on the road, it's to the right. The Nolans, they see that it's great for the, for the, for Wareham, for the, for the property. Then the other butter, Butter Mr. McDuffie, who has a larger home as well, approved the project. So that's our application. Happy to answer any questions once you go through the documents, looking at the plans. And then I, I do ask you to kind of look at the, the 9 Oak Hill that builds and what we're proposing. Very similar.
All right, very well. Yeah, if everybody looks at 9 Oak Hill, actually, I'm proud of the board. We approved that house. It was junk. And if you guys could see in the pictures, it came out beautiful. Whoever the owner is, I forget who was, it did a great job. I'm going through the plan. I don't know if everyone has the chance to go see all the plans and the letters. And I have to disagree with Mr. Morris. Well, I'm not disagreeing with him. He missed, because this is a non, non-conforming existing law. So there's a section 1355 that the board can, can, can decide on if this, if he sees that, that the plan is less than, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. We could treat it as special permit. I don't know why the Commissioner did not include it in this letter. Correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, and Ken, or any of the board member, because that is, your lot's 5,900 square feet, right?
Yes.
5,906, and it is, and lot size is 30,000, and there's an existing house. That makes it exist in non-conforming. And it increased in unconformity is allowed by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and which is 1355, correct, Ken? I don't have the book in front of me. Section 1355 would relieve him if the board feel is not that more detrimental to the neighborhood, correct?
That's right. And the 9 Oak Hill actually was approved by special permit.
Right, but it's the section 1355 that relieved that, right, Ken? Do you hear me, Ken?
Right, yes.
So I have a question on that.
Is it 1355 or 25? I don't have the book in front of me.
I don't have the book either.
I have the book. It looks like 1355. It says by a special permit.
Right. Okay, so I'm looking at the plan. I don't know if everyone, everyone can see the site plan. As I see, the existing house was a gray shaded area, was an existing garage detached. And it looks to me that the existing garage right now, it is set back about three feet, and they're gonna make an attached garage. And it's slightly, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the footprint is the same size, maybe 100 feet off? You get the numbers, Counselor? I mean, I could see.
It's kind of like just squaring off the property. It's kind of an awkward.
It's gonna be a little bit bigger footprint from what I can see here, Naz.
A little bigger?
You're getting.
Because I don't have the, I don't have the architectural plan. I can't pull them out. Can somebody pull the architectural plan?
Yeah, they're online.
On the beach side, I think that they're currently 30 feet, and they're going to 32 or something like that. On the street side, they're, they're, because there's a jog, it's, you know. And they're gonna be 36 feet long, and I, so they've added, you know, they're adding a couple, they're adding the width of the stairwell on, on the north side, and they're adding a few feet on the street side.
Right, but if they, correct, but if they add, I mean, they talk in here, existing, oh, maximum FAR 23 or 4, does, what was the existing square footage, do we know?
It's on here somewhere.
Yeah.
Because you got a guy's keeping deck in the back, there's existing deck, they changing it to stairs, or they adding the stairs?
Right over it, incorporating it.
They incorporated it, okay, okay. All right, anyway, so bottom line, I, I think that 1355 should apply here if the board feels this way. I want to start passing to board member. I want to start with Mr. Sample to, to speak on behalf of a neighbor that couldn't make it. Mr. Sample, you there?
Yes.
Can you just state the neighbors and the address name, if you don't mind?
I forgot the neighbor's name, but his address is 4 Oak Hill, and he's from Everett, Mass. And this is just a summer cottage he lives in, and he has no internet. And he was concerned, because he wanted to make the meeting, because that, raising that house up would block his view. He said the house on the left, McDuffie's, took up his view. But now this one here is definitely gonna block all his view of all the water, and he was adamant about it. But he wanted to know who he needed to check into, to see who I relate this message to. So I told him, I told him to get ahold of Ken Buckland, the town planner, in the town hall tomorrow.
Okay, well, here's, here's the deal.
He felt very, because of the news of it being on a Zoom meeting.
I, I understand.
He made the effort to come down here. He was not in a very good mood, I guess.
Well, a lot of us.
I told him I was, I told him I was sorry, and I was just finding out about the Zoom meeting as I was leaving, so.
We totally understand. Everybody's frustrated with these, with these hard times everybody going through. So it's not the only gentleman from Oak Hill. Now, here is the deal, Mr. Sample. I mean, I know, but before we go forward, the last hearing, who sat in the last hearing for Mr. Cruz? Is it Mr. Conti or Sample?
Conti was.
The one for the, Mr. Conti sat on the, on the, what do you call it, the assisted living? Or Mr. Sample? I don't have.
I think we both sat on the assisted living.
Okay, so, but the last one, do you guys recall who sat on the last one singly?
I think it was Conti, but I don't remember what the hearing was.
Okay.
It was something that Walter Cruz was in on, but wasn't present or something. I, I can't.
Okay, so Mr. Cruz, yeah, because he couldn't sit on it. So that's, that's the thing. So who was sitting in this? Mr. Sample or Conti? I think Mr. Sample sat, sat on that case, no? Or both of you gentlemen?
I think.
I think the both of us did.
The both of them were both on.
All right.
Meeting, but there wasn't, I, I thought there was a meeting.
I'm not, it's just to, just, just for the fact that Mr. Sample stated the, the, the concern of the other gentleman, I'm gonna have Mr. Conti sit in Mr. Cruz's case. And so there's no, no conflict at all with the issue. So Mr. Conti was sat on Mr. Walter Cruz's chair, so he'll vote for his chair. So again, I'm very sorry, the gentleman's frustrated. Everyone's frustrated with these hard times. But I guess life gotta go on, and he was notified like everyone else. The only, we had issues before with the house. I forget the address that she sent the, the, the Counselor, what was it, 9 Oak Hill? The one that he did the nice job, we just said.
9 Oak Hill.
9 Oak Hill as well, Mr. McDuffie's house. People complained across the street, which we totally understand, but unless they have sign and their deed saying that they have, they have rights for the view that came before us, Mr. Sample, not that you're presenting the guy, you just, you're not presenting the gentleman, but if the gentleman listening, it always comes before the town hall, my view, my view. But unfortunately, we don't, if it's not in your deed, we can't really like act on it. Do you recall this, Jimmy? Jimmy, he recalls it very well, because he argued it a lot. Okay, you want to put your two cents, Jimmy?
You, don't ask for two cents, because you get a half dollar's worth. I, I have, I do have, personally have strong feelings that if you don't have deeded view rights, then you don't have view rights. It's as simple as that. We've had several cases in front of the board where I, I can, I can give you a perfect example in answer where they have, I call it the old Howard Johnsons, that round, the building with the round roof there, right across from the pier.
There's Duncan Don and Audab. What's his name? Cabellas, Cabellas guy?
It's got some crazy seafood name now, but you know the place I'm talking about.
Right.
Cohog Republic is in there right now. That's what it is.
Okay.
So this is a perfect example where the neighbors from up on Union Street came yelling, well, first of all, the neighbors stopped the merry-go-round right behind that, because they indeed do have view rights onto the lot that's behind the Cohog Republic. But the lot that the Cohog Republic actually sits on, there is nothing in that deed that grants anybody any view rights. And when, I think his name was Cabellas, was trying to put a second story, they came in and screamed about their view rights. They had none.
That was a little bit different, Jimmy, than the.
Much different. If you have, if you have a view right in your deed, you have a view right, and nobody can block it. If you don't, then you don't. It's as simple as that.
Well, one, one of the things about this is.
Let, let Ken speak. Go ahead, Kenny.
You're, you're not enforcing deeds, deeded rights. What you're doing is enforcing the zoning bylaw, and the zoning bylaw is silent on, on view as, as a impact.
The zoning bylaw says that the view should be considered.
Right. It doesn't buy any criteria or standards to view.
All right, let's, let's not argue about it. I, I see, I understand. It is kind of silent, and then it has, it says to be considered. But I believe Jimmy's right to be considered if you have deeded rights, and there's the reason why you pay three times the price to buy a house on the water versus across the street. Now, who would like to speak? So we're not, Mr. Sample, go ahead.
I would just like to say, we, we had a meeting about Fisherman's Cove, I think, or in that area, and the neighbor behind him, the guy was putting on addition in the front of the building. He was trying to look for, because he was just over the line of foot, but the whole thing was the back neighbor said he didn't want it to block the view, and we talked about making sure that he didn't block the view. So I'm, I'm confused. Do we worry about the view, or do we not worry about?
Jimmy, one second.
By the board.
Right. Let me just refresh my memory, Mr. Sample. Which one, Fisherman's Cove? I forgot. What's the address?
It's over off of Robinwood. I, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but there was an addition. The guy was closing in the farmer's porch and putting addition on, and there was a person from behind him that was at the meeting. And it seemed like we told them that he couldn't go up any higher to block the view. It was a concern, and it was something that we, I don't know, can't remember the records, but I, I do remember that there was a consideration in that conversation about that, the neighbor behind him's view.
Okay, Jimmy, do you recall that?
I do recall that the house that was doing the addition is addressed on Fisherman's Cove Road. The guy whose view would have been blocked is not on Fisherman's Cove Road. He's on a road that comes up from behind to a cul-de-sac. And had it just simply been a matter of, you can't block my view, we probably would have made a different decision. The decision was made as an, as a let's make a deal type of a decision. There was a.
He made a, he made a deal to keep the ridge low.
Setback, there was an encroachment on lot coverage, I'm using the word. There were other issues that the guy needed a variance or relief on. So the neighbor, if we grant, the neighbor can go to the court and say, I appeal this within the 20 days, and, and he'll win. So knowing that, the guy on Fisherman's Cove Road played, let's make a deal. I won't block your view if you don't give me a hard time about my, I don't know what it was, two feet closer to the property line, or my 30, 10% more. Well, I forget. What I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that there was another way that the neighbor could have blocked or stopped the decision, because every decision is appealable. So what we did, what we tried to do, and what we tried to do, and what we did do in that instance, is we played, let's make a deal. And the guy out back said, yeah, sure, I won't complain if you paint your house purple, as long as you don't block my view. It wasn't paint my house purple, but you get, you're getting my point. In this instance, there is no, I don't, there's no in this conversation yet. There's no let's make a deal. If we look at the plan closer, we may find there is an increase in lot coverage. There is an increase. And, and so this neighbor across the street may have that to hang his hat on and go appeal a decision. If he were present and yelling and screaming, if you guys let this guy go up, I'm gonna appeal your decision, then the applicant may have motivation to play, let's make a deal.
But I don't, and I don't want to be in a conversation for some person. This, all I was doing was laying a message, because this night was, this, this night is screwed up, the way we were all chasing our tails.
You're absolutely right.
And I, I don't think that it's fair to the guy personally, but I don't know how this is gonna act out.
Right, Mr. Sample, I totally understand. And I just want to add to all of, all of us here. Every project and hearing has its, its merit and its uniqueness. So we cannot much compare it. And like Jimmy said, all our decisions can be appealed in court, because our decisions as a zoning board pretty much most of the time break into law. So that's how the government set this board, I guess, to see, because sometimes the laws are harsh, and it doesn't apply to everybody. I guess that's why they created a zoning board. So each one has its own merit. I do feel for the person that is not here. I'm sorry, but it is what it is. We all struggling. We all have work. We all volunteers, as you, Mr. Sample, too. And I'm glad you're speaking on the behalf of the gentleman, which is good. His voice could be heard. But unfortunately, we're gonna, we're gonna see what the rest of the board says, and we go from there. Okay, I start from my right, left, whoever, Veronica, ladies first.
Get rid of the map and get everybody.
I have a couple of things that I'm thinking about for a lot of what's been being discussed about this. And regarding the gentleman who showed up at the town hall, I wouldn't be opposed to extending this hearing another two weeks to give him a chance to voice his opinion. He'll have a chance to be in the right place at the right time, because this is, it's a disruption on how things have been going. This is our first week back on complete Zoom, and even being a boardman myself, I didn't know where it was gonna be. So I, and I just had to double-check. So I think it wouldn't be unreasonable for us to extend the meeting another two weeks and give that gentleman a chance to voice his opinion, where he is, it sounds like he's in the butter.
Right, but we didn't decide yet. We haven't argued enough to, that we're making a decision tonight. We haven't come to the point. Of course, we could extend this, I think, 90 days, but nobody decided to make a decision tonight. But do you have any, and we'll come back to you. But do you have any, and we'll come back to you.
That's my thought.
Absolutely, we'll take it up. You're absolutely right, no, of course. But do you have any technical thing you want to share with us now before we hear the rest of the board?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
About in 1355, I am looking at this and there are one, two, three, four subcategories under 1355. And I don't have the plan in front of me. I'm not 100% sure. I see Ken posted this here. But one, the last two requirements under 1355 for this to be considered a special permit is the replacement structure will not create any new non-conformities. I think the FAR would be considered a new, perhaps non-conformity. I'm throwing that question out there. And then the other thing is, it looks like it's not following the same footprint. So that would be number three, the replacement structure would not intensify any of the existing non-conformities. Building coverage, impervious coverage and setback encroachment. So those are just considerations. I don't know if it does those things. I'm just throwing it out there.
You're, you're right, but that's in a conforming law. Say you have a 31,000 square feet and the house setback.
Not for a conforming law, a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming, right?
This is existing non-conforming.
Yep, and that's what it says, a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family residential structure may be special permit, may be demolished or replaced with a new structure, provided that the zoning board of appeals determines that one, two, three and four. And three and four are the things that I'm questioning. Is there a new non-conformity with the FAR? And is there, are there any new conformities in terms of setback? Because the footprint's not the same. I don't know. It looks like the footprints.
It's not the same.
Maybe it's making another non-conformity.
Right, it's not the same. But an existing non-conforming law, you could extend the non-conformity, you know? We get, we get to your point, but we'll have the attorney more. And can you clarify this? Do you have any ideas on that?
Just pulling up.
I wish I have the book in front of me, but I don't.
Yeah, so it is for pre-existing non-conforming. And there are the four requirements regarding, and I'd see what Veronica's concerns are in the last two. I don't believe that there were, on number three, we're doing any, you took away those setback encroachments. The FAR, I'll have to look into that as far as new conform, non-conformities on that.
Just have one thing quick, if I could, I don't know, but that your frontage. I'm not, I'm not sure that in that zone that you have the right frontage. Was there a ZBA meeting to approve his frontage? But it doesn't seem like his frontage is adequate for an R30.
The frontage is not adequate for an R30, but it's a pre-existing non-conforming frontage.
Thank you.
Sorry Veronica, go ahead.
Sorry, so the, the plan that Ken has up on the screen and he has that purple outline. So that's the new footprint or is that not going to happen? It's going to continue to be in the old footprint?
That is the new footprint.
Okay.
Yep, squaring off the property.
So is that, I'm trying to see, I can't really see that well, what the setbacks are on the side and if it's increasing those setbacks. That would be the only thing, one of the things that would make it become a variance as opposed to a special permit.
Yeah, I know that the applicant did meet, you know, this was in the transition of the building commissioners, Stephen Morris, having the old letter that he did meet again with Mr. Aquina regarding that. And then that's where, when you look at that, that denial letter, right, there's omissions because he had switched the plans, changed it. So it was only that, that middle section regarding 628 on the, on the table for the FAR. So it didn't seem like he, the commissioner, thought that there were any setback issues. Or side, yeah. So it's really just the FAR, the living space that he's looking for. I did just want to make a comment. I don't, we don't have to go back into it. But the gentleman who is opposing, I did do some research on, on that title prior to the meeting. Just because I've heard that he might be opposing it, there aren't any deeded rights to the view. So that's just something I want on record.
I think that's all I had to say regarding that, I just.
Okay, Jake, you want to say something? I'm just reviewing some, I know, I get my book.
No, I have nothing to say. I've just been listening. So I've heard everything I need to hear at this time.
Mr. County.
Well, I agree with, with Veronica. I wouldn't be opposed to extending the hearing. And I'd also be interesting knowing what the existing FAR is also. I did take a drive-by there today and I took a look and I did see the, the neighbor on the other side of the street. And I kind of looked over and I said, well, he may be, you know, losing a little bit of a view. But he, he doesn't have really much view now, so. So I'm, I'm not sure if that's really a concern. Looks like they're just adding a little bit more on the side of it that would, that would block his view. I'm not sure about how much that is. It looks like almost a little bit more than the width of the staircase there. But to me, when I looked over there from, from like his property, I mean, you couldn't see over his, his single family house that he had there, the single-story house. And you couldn't see too much around beside it. So I guess I'm not sure how much of a view that the neighbor's going to lose. But like I said, I'm not opposed to extending the hearing either.
Yeah, all right, Mr.
Looking at a piece of paper here that I picked up from the office. I don't know if you, let's see how I can do this.
Yeah.
I think this is the existing structure and it's square footage.
Living area. Yeah, 702, total 1628, right, and living area 702, right?
Yep. If that helps anybody.
Thank you. I, I, we, we, it looks like definitely we're going to extend this hearing because I really want to check that, that section, that, that law and the bylaw, the section that determines if it's going to be treated as a, as a variance or a special permit. And I know for a fact that non-conformity could be extended. So I'm looking here. And on the non-conformity also, we usually take an average of five houses on the street and see if it's like that similar. For instance, say all the houses on the street are 800 square feet and the applicant wants to put 1,500 and it looks odd. We usually say it's more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood and we treat it as a variance. So to be honest with you guys, personally, I would really like to, the new commissioner, Mr. Aquina, I know he's very knowledgeable about this stuff and get to the bottom of it because I believe Mr. Morris' letter is missing something personally. Ken, do you agree at all with me?
This is, this is under a special table. That for existing very small lots. And it was, it was drawn up by Mr. Aquina. And I'm sure he'd be able to interpret it correctly.
I don't have that letter. I have Mr. Morris' letter. Do you have Mr. Aquina's letter?
No, I, I don't have Mr. Aquina's letter. The only letter in there is, is Morris and it was modified.
Right.
No, I'm wondering if this law, so I know that we oftentimes you can extend the non-conformity, but I think the difference here is that the, the building is being entirely demolished, not renovated or extended itself. Because the, I think that may be the, it's talked about it being demolished or replaced, not renovated.
No, I don't, I don't think it's the case because I don't think that's the case about that. I'm, you know, I'm not confused, but I don't think it's the case demolish or addition. I don't think that matters. All right, we can still chit chat about it. Mrs. Counselor Moore, and you, you want to share something?
Um, just that we had already met with Mr. Aquina. And so it's, it's kind of hard to, I understand the concern with the butter who isn't present, but I'm very familiar with views and how views are as.
No, talk to me laws. I forget that, but what Mr. Aquina say.
So if we're looking at, if we're going to go with the 1355 and go on the special permit route, which is what would be our preference, obviously one and two detrimental to the neighborhood, is it or isn't it? Contributing to nuisance hazards and then three and four, so the replacement structure will not intensify any of the following existing non-conformities. Building coverage, impervious coverage or setback encroachment, it's not, we're doing FAR. And the replacement structure will not create any new non-conformities. Now, we already are non-conforming in our FAR. That, that sheet that Mr. Sample showed, had the assessor sheet show the square footage, I think it's over 1,600 and 1,500 is in this lot, is in this, in this small lot, that's what we're allowed, the FAR. So we're not, it's already non-conforming. We're not making any new non-conformities. So I guess that, that would be in my analysis on, on the 1355.
What did Mr. Aquina say when you met him, laws, law wise?
Yeah, so that's why you see that marked up letter where it's Mr. Morris's letter and then it says omit, omit. And then we have notes showing, using that 628 table and that's what we're, we need to seek. Is there a letter like marked up with highlighter and handwritten notes?
Because every time I use this one, I kind of lose you guys.
I think Ken is pulling it up.
Anyone in the audience want to speak while we're looking at stuff?
Could I say something?
Yeah, name and address for the record.
Kevin Nicholson.
Okay, Mr. Nicholson, what do you have to say?
The, I submitted one of the documents that when I went and met with the building commissioner and he gave me, and I submitted it, it's with the paperwork and it says the FAR variance 628 plus 1357. Not 1355, that's, and it's, I submitted it with my paperwork. I don't know what 1357 is and just, and I heard you guys talking about 1355.
Yeah, so he's looking at 1357 as any proposed change that adds a new non-conformity will require a variance from the zoning board. So if that's what Mr. Aquina's, that's why.
Are you already non-conforming?
That's what, I didn't agree with that. And yeah, then analysis, because it is already.
I think it's already non-conforming because the garage.
Well, it's the FAR, right, the living space and it's already at 1,600 over the 1,500, which is what they're allowed in that, for that lot size on the 628 table.
All right, so I see, I see the letter from Mr. Morris saying he's omitting Article 621 and Article for side and rear back and maximum coverage. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, because there was a prior plan submitted that had an attached garage and that got changed to this.
Oh, okay, so I have, I'm looking the one with the garage. Okay, so you changed, okay, there's two plans. So now it's simple, a square thing, right? Just, there's no garage now.
Again, very similar to the nine Oak Hill.
Oh, I get you, I get you. Okay, that's a big difference now, all right.
You mind, can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
I'm through the chair and to the council, I just, I'm, I'm looking at it on Google Earth. I'm on street view.
Sure.
I'm trying to, I didn't pull up the assesses map yet, but, so I know which house is Jack Nolan's.
Yep.
And he's, he's kind of on minded avenue, he's really faces minded avenue. And then after you go past his house, you can go onto the dirt road, which is the road, you know, where we're talking about. There's a first house on the right that has a garage with a black door. And then there's a second house on the right that has no garage. It's a little house with black shingles. Is that the subject property? Am I describing?
Jack's properties, Jack and his wives. They own those three.
Who's answering?
That's the applicant, Mr. Nicholson.
Evan?
Yeah.
Kevin Nicholson, yes.
Oh, Kevin, on your screen it says Evan, E V A N.
Yeah, that's my son's name. I'm not sure why.
Okay, well, you're on your son's.
I got scallop on mine, so. I'm anti cricket.
An anti cricket.
Let me, let me interfere quick. I have it on Google as well.
Yeah.
There's a house across the street that looks like solar on top of it. Is this across from the property?
The house across from my property is Karen and Ed Coffee and they're, they're on board with it.
No, no, I'm looking on Google, sir. Is the house across the street has solar, solar on top, solar panels?
I don't believe so.
All right, is that a house with a pool? Do you know?
No.
So what, what's your number? What's your address? Is it?
Three Oak Hill Road.
Oh, okay, okay, hold on. I got the wrong one.
You're in the wrong, yeah. Where are you? You doing the aerial view or the street view, Naz?
Oak Hill Road, I'm looking, I'm looking on Google. Oak Hill Road, one second. All right, it took me, oh, okay, all right, here we go. Oh, it's not, yeah, I see, I see Bobby's house, McDuffie. Are you from the left or right of McDuffie?
If you, if you're north to the north.
If I'm on the water, I'm looking at McDuffie. He's on the left.
Yes.
Right next to Mr. McDuffie?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, yeah, two, one house down after Bob's house is the nine Oak Hill, so you can kind of see.
Yeah, two, the second house after McDuffie to the right is the nine.
Yep, that's right.
All right, okay, all right. Oh, yeah, I see with the small garage, okay.
Can I say a quick thing, Naz?
Go ahead, Naz, yeah.
Um, so I think Mrs. Norton is right, she said that, that the letter from the commissioner and that's what I was getting at, 1355, number four, is basically the same language as 1357, which is the FAR, the change in non-conformity. But if there's already non-conforming FAR, it's not a new non-conformity. And I think we could probably treat it as a special permit. That would be.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, if, if the FAR is not a new non-conformity, then, I mean, what, what's the existing square footage? And so maybe we could just review the math just to double check that and determine if we want to treat it as a special permit or a variance.
Well, this is a question for the applicant to have ready. I definitely see going for another hearing. So, and I'm going to reach out to Mr. Aquina myself, discuss, to discuss it. And Counselor Moore should as well, to get to the bottom of the denial letter. So there's nothing to scratch or, you know, so find the one, because after all, Mr. Aquina is going to be acting on this. He could totally disagree with the whole letter that's written and he could, he don't have to give a building permit. Even if we grant it, he could deny it again. So, so let's get on board with Mr. Aquina. In the same time, we need numbers of square footage and stuff. So for the next hearing from the applicant or the architect or the counselor, so we have numbers, hard numbers to go by. It looks to me that it's definitely with the new foundation, it's definitely less coverage or probably the same because you're eliminating that garage, which is a big chunk that will fill up that little gap. But then again, I don't have numbers in front of me right now. You look, you have 36 by 32, whatever that is.
Is, is the garage going away? I thought they were going to keep the existing garage.
I don't know.
They're going to raise the garage on the plan. It says, it says exterior, one-story garage to be raised on this plan. That, that plan that you're looking at, if you go up towards the garage, there's an arrow pointing on it. And it says the garage is to be raised. I'm just curious if that's what's going to happen or if they're getting rid of the garage.
Getting rid of the garage.
Yeah, Mr. Nicholson, you're getting rid of it totally, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
That's what I saw.
Those looking at the older plan that had the garage with it. There's two plans, Mr. Sample.
Two plans, but they're both, both, unless they didn't take that out, the both plans say the garage is going to be raised. Because I'm looking at this, the one that's on the screen and it says, still there's an arrow pointing to the garage, saying the garage will be raised.
Yeah, I see the same thing.
Either that didn't get omitted or it's staying there and getting raised. We did, I don't, do we have any confirmation? He's getting rid of it, right?
Yes.
Well, that's, this is one more reasons. Next, that's another thing, a homework for the applicant to do, get us clean final plans with the revised date. So we can address the revision date, okay? Mr. Nicholson, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, that engineers are on the, there's a conservation hearing tonight too, so that's where they are.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we can get those changed.
Okay, very good.
This is Dave Switzer. I actually joined the call as well. I'm one of the abutters.
Yeah.
I was invited, I actually drove from Easton to Wareham and found out that uh, it was a Zoom call. So I had to drive back to Easton again to get on the Zoom call. Um, I don't know why you don't notify people.
I'm sorry, just, I just, sir, just your name, sir, what, what, just your name and address for the record.
David Switzer, S W I T Z E R, and I'm for Oak Hill Road.
Okay, you for, okay, you are across the street.
Correct.
All right, so go ahead. What you say, what do you like to say?
Well, I I have not seen the plans up to this point of what Ken is proposing to do. Um, in the letter, he's, it's going to, he's, he wants to build a second floor and the second floor, I have a two floor, I have a two story house. And if he goes up to the second floor, he's gonna start to block my view of the, of the water.
Okay.
So that's my concern.
This, this is the gentleman that was at the office that I, I mean, at the multi-service center that I.
Correct, yes.
All right, excellent. So then.
I just want to let you know that I I did my part and I was sticking up for you, well, relaying your message, but I'm glad you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. All right, very well. All right, Jimmy, you want to put uh, Mr. Uh, uh, gee, cause I'm horrible. Mr. Switzer, do you, is there anything in your deed stating you have war rights and view rights? Do you know?
I have deed to beach rights, yeah.
Have deed to beach, right? Okay, but you do not have deed to beach water view from the, from the three oak street, from the land.
Well, on, have you ever seen a deed that had that?
Yeah, we have seen, we have, yes.
I I've not, and I've talked to some of my real estate attorney friends and real estate friends, and they've not seen that. I know that's a question that was asked on nine Oak Hill. And nobody, you know, the, the neighborhood of nine Oak Hill, you know, I wasn't part of that, those discussions, but.
Right.
Yeah, we, so I I'm still looking to see if somebody actually has that in their deed anywhere.
We, we, I've seen them and one of the board members was suggested with pretty much everybody on board. We're gonna continue these public hearing to do more researchers and more uh, like give people more chance to view things so that you're gonna get another hearing and most likely next time is gonna be also on uh, on viewpoint. So you, but check with the planning board department, but most likely I, it's gonna be on Zoom meeting. So uh, unfortunately, most of the town of Wareham, we have these issues. People say, oh, block my views and stuff, but I do, I've done, I deal with real estate and construction and I've seen easements like this. A lot of people who own lands back then on the water and in and across the street sold the front and kept rights for views. Just like you keep rights for easements or keep rights for, I've seen crazy rights, uh, like crazy deed restriction. Like can't go over ten feet or five or twenty or, so that this does exist legally and it does.
I've not seen it and I couldn't, and I've not been able to find one, okay?
Right, but anyway, anyway, you're gonna have the chance more to do more homework for next hearing. And I don't know if you get the part that we have to go back to our commissioner and get the final uh, like final uh, view on that thing because he's not the one who wrote that letter. That that commissioner had left town. We have a new commissioner that we'd like to consult with on that denial letter. So we all on the same page. And a couple of board members would like to visit the place, which is, it's a plus. And so it'll be, it'll be a win-win for everybody to continue this public hearing to give everybody more chance to look at it. And do you wanna, do you wanna like give more comments to the boards of like taking consideration, do some research?
No, it's more that, I I mean, I think it's the, it's the, my issue is the view from my second floor.
I I I understand.
I mean, when the, when the when that uh, community was designed, okay, the house is off the water, we're in between the houses on the water now. You know, now um, it it's being filled in for the people off the water.
I totally understand. And that's, I mean, unfortunately, but that's, that's how life is. And that's why they paid triple or double the price on the water, but doesn't matter. Jimmy, did you want to say something?
The gentleman uh, on the screen is D L S W I, the one that was saying he wanted to see from his second story window. I've, I've finally got the assesses map up. Can you tell me which lot you are, sir?
Uh, I'm number four. Um.
You're the, you're the.
I don't have the lot number in front of me.
You're number, oh, your address is number four.
Number four, Oak Hill Road, yeah. I don't know, I don't have anything in front of me.
Jimmy, he's, he's right, directly across from McDuffie, directly.
Yeah, I'm directly across McDuffie.
And so he, you're either T six or T eight then, okay? So you've got a, um, you've got a a narrow lot that goes between Narrows Road and Oak Hill Terrace.
Oak Hill Road, yes.
Oak Hill Road, I'm sorry, yeah, no, okay, yeah, 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 okay. Um, um, so I, you you're not the triangular lot right down at.
No, no, that's Coffee. That's, that's two Oak Hill, which is directly across from Kevin.
That's two and you're four, you're the great, you're his abutter, you're T six, okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get who all the players are and where they are here. I sometimes take the map and print it out and write the names on it. So when you're talking, I can you know, place your, place you um, on the map. All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Is, I see Mr. Bertella, it's Mary and most Bertella on online with us or no? Or Susan, Robin, Andrade, none of these?
Hi, I'm Robin Andy, I, Robin and Lou, we're actually neighbors. We're at eleven Oak Hill. We're next to nine on the other side, on the water side. So we're just neighbors of John Spinelli. Um, we just, and we're just on, just to listen, because if we want to do work, we want to learn. So.
Okay.
I haven't met you yet, but we will soon.
Yes, I mean, do you have a, are you in favor or against this project?
Uh, personally, I'm in favor because anything that um, we do to enhance Wareham as a town is a big win for us. We're not permanent residents yet. My grandfather owned this house for, I think bought it in the early nineteen fifties and we're, we're buying it from our family. Um, as we speak, with Gillian's help, we're just waiting to get a few things finished. And so we're gonna stay, keep it in the family and um, anything that we can do to enhance Wareham is great. So, yeah.
That's fantastic. You guys love it and staying here. That's great. I always, it's always nice to see houses stays in generation and have so much love and caring and stuff. But thank you, Mrs. Andrade. Uh, Susan's, is Susan's iPhone five? Is she online with us? I hear not Mr. Bertella, Bertolo. Uh, that's, that's the engineer Brad. Is he on? No. Mr. Cruz, Steve Cruz? I hear none. And Mary, is this a Mary, the same Andrade or different? I guess no Mary.
Mary's got her microphone muted, so she might be trying to answer your, she may not have a microphone.
Ah, I understand. Okay. All right, going back to the board, who would like to add some things so to send the counselor and the applicant with some homework to do? Would you like the guys to add? Veronica, what do you like to add?
Uh, the only thing I would say is, um, let's get some, I know, uh, I think Rick looked up the solid numbers for the F A R that are existing.
Yeah.
And as long as we have those existing numbers for F A R, um, and what the lot size is, we know where we need to be and we can determine if this is a new nonconformity or not. That's the only thing I would say we should try to determine the next.
All right, Mr. Conti.
Um, I would also say update the um, proposed site plan and and remove the note that says existing one story garage be raised.
Okay, very well. Uh, Mr. Sample, do you want to add something?
Nope, I'm good. I agree with the two board members' statements.
All right, and I think we should add a new letter from the commissioner. We should have, Jake, what do you say?
You guys said it all.
All right, Jimmy.
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty good. I I think to the counselor, I would say um, as many pitches as possible um, for the, for the neighbors view, for this view, for existing conditions. Elevation, I know you're right on the edge of elevation there and stilts are not stilts, so I I obviously if he needed stilts, it would be drawn that way, but it um, it's close. And um, that's it for me.
No, I don't think that even if if they're on line, it's A E fifteen, they're not even in a flood. Which is good.
Wait, I know Bobby's, if Bobby's there, a butter, he didn't have to go up.
Right, yeah, they don't either. They are, they are above five hundred.
So probably not.
No, they're above the five hundred year and the E L fourteen, which is minimum flood is about twenty, thirty feet away from them. But anyway, I, that's what I see on the plan. So we need updated plans anyway. All right, who else would like to add something? Mr. Ivan, Mr. Erickson, would you like to say something? No? Kenny, want to add something?
More said.
All right. Okay, so everyone is on board to continue until December ninth?
So moved.
All right, okay, so uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mister, uh, who said, Mr. Sample, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Always abstain. Mister, the the gentleman from four, four Oak Hill, you will not receive another notice on the mail. So, and you have to check in with the town called the planning department a day ahead, see if it's in Zoom meeting or it's in person.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so I, we see you guys on uh, December ninth.
Can you ask Gillian to submit a letter extending the um, the hearing to uh, December ninth?
Why? That's the first public hearing.
Yeah, you have to continue it to a date certain and then December ninth is the date.
Even set the date, Naz, of when with.
Oh, I didn't, we didn't say the date. We're sorry. Okay. All right, very well.
Okay.
Counselor, okay, you get that, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so December ninth, thank you. All right, Kenny, what do we got in the agenda?
That's it.
All right, board members, you want to say something?
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thanks to all of you. Thank you, you too.
All right, thanks for all of you. We here, sorry for the inconvenience. We all, I mean, and everybody anyway, so we don't like it to be on Zoom either, so we see you guys on December ninth. Eat a lot of turkey. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Always abstain, adjourn. Thank you, gentlemen. Happy Thanksgiving. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, sorry Veronica and counsel. All right.